Good evening. Welcome to the Walpole Planning Board Meeting of September 18th, 2025. It being after seven o'clock, the first issue will be minutes. And I believe we've been asked to hold, so we'll continue to hold until October 2nd. Okay. Uh, nothing else, let's see. The Ross Carmen discussion is being held also till October 2nd, when Mr. Conroy will be back. Is that? Okay. Uh, 383 Fisher is here. We have a few minutes. Come ahead. Uh, as you can notice, we're missing a couple of our members. We do have a quorum, but it may affect some votes coming up forward.
Okay. Yep. Joe Wilson, I just was the one kind of spearheading that project over there at Fisher Street. We came, everything's signed off and approved, Jim can attest, but um, the parking lot lighting, the civil engineer in his infinite wisdom put nine light poles around the parking lot. So, we're proposing just to drop it down to three, which is more than adequate. And we've got some, I gave Katie a, kind of, oh, maybe you got it, kind of a photometric layout, which will show you, just to avoid spread onto the neighbor's yard and that sort of thing.
Do you have the existing one we could look at?
There should be the, the first page is the existing, and then the second is proposed.
Oh, I see. Okay, so you have pictures, okay.
We did, I actually spoke to a couple of the neighbors today, and they're very much in favor of having it not look like Foxborough. But.
Okay, I, you comfortable that there's enough light for your purposes?
Absolutely, yep.
We have a note from town engineer, Kyle Waldorf, he's reviewed the email and the reduction, and he's generally okay with it, changing it from nine to three. With the modification, with one condition, illumination on the Wesley fixture, which I'm not sure which way would be west on this map. Because I know Fisher Street's running this way, and that's kind of running north. So I'm not sure if he's meaning the one closest to the building.
What was his comment?
Um, "The illumination on the Wesley fixture be adjusted, lowered, to keep the lighting within the site specified by our zoning."
I think it'd be as you face the building to the right.
It looks like it's the one closer to the right. Huh?
As you face it.
If you face the building, it'd be on your right. I, I live opposite street.
Okay. So looking at.
But yeah, we can, we can adjust them. I believe they're adjustable quite a ways.
Yeah. Looks like a li- little of it is intruding into the neighbor's lot, so you'll want to adjust it somewhat, so that none of the light goes into the neighbor's lot. So I, it, the question before us is whether this is a major or minor modification.
Yeah.
Uh, John, do you have any comments?
It seems quite minor to me.
Paul?
Yeah, it's minor to me.
Okay, I agree with that. So with the condition being that the lights are adjusted so much so that no light extends into the neighboring property, we consider it a minor modification. Do we need to have a vote on that?
Motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept it as a minor modification to the existing site?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
That is mine.
Motion by Paul, seconded by John Griffin?
Yes.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Three oh.
Three zero zero.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, do you need this back then?
Yes, please, I just want to put it in the folder for future. Good night.
Good night.
Okay. We have something from Walmart here.
I do.
You have an extension request?
John.
Thank you. Okay. For Walmart's continued hearing on their revision, their new site plan, the request of continuance through, no. This is already September 18th. Okay. So the request of continuance on the September 18th meeting, open without testimony, and extent, continuation till October 2nd, 2025, with an extension of time through October 31st, 2025.
So you have to vote the extension first?
We have to vote the extension first, right.
And then continue, I won't tell you what I mean.
We have a motion to accept the extension through October 31st, 2025, for the Walmart project.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Three zero zero. So the meeting will be continued until October 2nd, 2025. Do we have a time?
At 7:10.
Seven ten.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay. Do we have someone, uh, no, have to wait a few minutes. I'll try to get everything out of the way before we get to you, Paul.
Do we have 383 Fisher?
We just did that. That was the lighting.
383 was Fisher Street?
Oh, shit, okay, sorry. Sorry, my bad.
Mm-hmm.
Um, did you want to do the zoning articles now?
No, I'd like to get the other one out of the way first. It's still almost seven ten, so. I actually have. Hour being after seven ten, we have an article for Three Heidi Street subdivision, continued hearing. We have someone in the process, okay. Before you get too into it, as you can see, there's no one really here.
Understood.
As John is new to the board, he has no vote for you.
Nice to meet you.
Paul has missed two of the hearings, so he is also no vote for you. So we don't have enough to vote on anything for you tonight.
I would appreciate a continuance without opening.
Okay.
Need an extension.
We need an extension then.
We do. Can you tell me the date?
I can do October 2nd, if you wish.
For the extension?
No, the extension will be through the end of October if you would.
Oh, for the meeting, I'd like to actually go out two meetings.
You want to go out two, okay.
That will still work, because there's two October meetings.
Okay.
Ten sixteen, then basically this is the next one.
Ten sixteen.
Oh, so you'd like to continue to ten sixteen?
You got ten two, ten sixteen.
I would appreciate an extension to ten sixteen.
So a continuance to ten sixteen.
So ten thirty-one we'll extend it to.
Extension to ten thirty-one.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for extending.
Hold on one second, just in case something happens, could we have an extension through November 30th, just in case something came up?
Sure.
All right, it's not going to affect anything other than.
Nope, that's fine, November 30th.
You'll still have the continuance.
I'll make a motion to extend to November 30th.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
And we'll continue this meeting until October 16th?
At seven fifteen.
At seven fifteen PM.
Perfect, thank you, I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your cooperation. Okay, yeah, hours being after seven o'clock, the only item left are the zoning articles for our public hearing.
Hello, members of the board. Pat Shaney's Community and Economic Development Director. With me is Jim Crowley, Building Commissioner. Obviously, Mr. Griffin, Mr. Larry, on our steering committee, and hi, Paul. We got, I think the only one that hasn't been on, that's not on the committee. But either way, as we talked about last time in July, we're bringing forward kind of the next phase of zoning amendments that are part of the comprehensive zoning rewrite. That project is really more geared towards a, a legal review of our zoning, cleaning up inconsistencies, having language be compliant with state zoning law, and then also taking some substantive changes when it makes sense for certain locations that may be yeah, not, not fully clear, not properly worded. So there are alterations that are part of this process. So, this time around, we are bringing changes primarily to Section 6, which is dimensional regulation, Section 8 of our parking regulations, and Section 9, which deals with nonconforming situations, or lawfully nonconforming uses and structures, rather, which will be the new name of it. John, I don't know if you want me to go over maybe Section 8 and 9 first, and then say.
I think it'll be simplest, we'll definitely be at no issues, then we just have six left to do.
Absolutely. So, I'll start, I'll start with eight, just because I think that's probably the easiest one to explain. Eight, when you look at the article itself, it's, it's primarily explanation is what we have here. A lot of the changes are relatively minor, and you'll see it's kind of cut up where it goes Section 8.1, Section 8.3. That's just because there's so many sections that we're not making changes. So what's highlighted is really the subsections of Section 8, where changes are occurring. So, I know it can be kind of awkward to read it like that, but it's just trying to reduce paper and not have the full section, because there were really minor changes here that are going to deal with trying to better explain some of the, some of the use regulations and, not use regulations, I'm sorry, some of the parking regulations. Primary change here really has to do with moving nonconforming off-street parking, which is currently in Section 9, to Section 8. So, that's probably the most, the largest change that's noticeable. I don't know if you have any questions or thoughts on, or, talking to you, but I'm talking to everybody, I just.
So Pat, well, I mean, I, I know these two individuals would be more pervy to it, but you're saying, so Section 9 talks about off-street parking?
Section 8 deals with.
Section 9 and nonconforming situations, nonconform, nonconforming and noncompliant situations.
Yeah.
So this was one piece of that.
Yep.
Okay.
So there's a portion in Section 9 dealing with nonconforming parking. We felt it was better situated, better, better to be in Section 8, dealing with all parking, so trying to, almost like a reorganization. And you'll notice that with some of these articles too, there's trying to have some of the subsections that are out of place, and have them be in a more appropriate section of the zoning. So it's all, you know, if you're looking at parking, if you're looking at nonconformities, if you're looking at dimensional regulations, there are situations where we've noticed that a few different subsections elsewhere need to be put back in the, in the correct section. So, that's really the, the bulk of Section 8 was taking, have some explanatory changes, and then moving nonconforming parking to Section 8.
As, as a resident of Walpole, Patrick, I mean, do we really have a parking problem? I've never heard of anybody in the town complain.
Yeah.
Our parking situation.
So, it's interesting, and I'd say it, when we looked at parking for, as it relates to this effort, it was obviously clarity, improving the wording of our zoning, and, and trying to make sure that what is there is, is easy to interpret, or easier to interpret as best as possible for a developer. Parking regulations themselves, you could argue, whether it's here or elsewhere, could always be revised and looked at. You know, we, we've talked about, you know, in the downtown, for example, we have multifamily or mixed use. Do you really need two parking spaces per dwelling unit, or is it better to be based upon bedrooms? And that's usually kind of a thought that both developers and planners have when it comes to like, more like transit-oriented locations, areas that have connections to public transit. So that's one example where we could look at that in the future, and we actually had looked at it previous year, and it didn't at a passing town meeting. We didn't bring those types of substance changes for this time, only because I think that effort itself could be its own, probably could be its own town meeting, to take a full, much more in-depth look, if we would think that we need to completely rewrite. Overall, though, I, and Jim could back me up to this, I haven't really noticed some, I mean, you could argue for the residential component, but from the commercial component, I don't particularly see many issues with the parking the way it's written right now.
Now, I think the only thing that I would say, when we come to zoning bylaws, right? My two years here, there seems to be areas that are great, where builders
Yep.
know enough of law to circumvent our verbiage.
Yep.
Previously written, not now, where they're able to maximize on that. Are we taking the steps, and again, I'm, I haven't been pervy to the meetings, are we taking the steps to sharpen that language where that, that isn't the case anymore?
Is, but, yeah, I mean, that's, that was one of the intent behind this too, is trying to remove inviguity, and trying to have something be as, you know, we have situations sometimes where some of the language could be just overly descriptive, or kind of clunky, and it's kind of taking away from what you need to, what it's, you know, trying to be said. So, that was part of this process too, looking at that, and trying to be not only just consistent with state law, but direct in how we say it, and trying to remove loopholes, I guess, this way of putting it.
Okay.
Any questions on eight?
I mean, I don't have any specific questions, because I haven't really seen, you know, what the changes that have been made, but, I mean, again, I, I go, I can only draw on experience of what has been presented, and what I've seen in the last couple of years is just that our bylaws, in certain areas, not all.
Yep.
There's verbiage in there that people have been able to bypass and made advantage to in their favor, which then now crippilizes us in making decisions, because the bylaws say they are, or they're not able to do whatever, whatever that is.
No, you, you know, just on a larger scale, that's why lawyers exist, right? There's always, there's always, whether they're looking to take advantage, or they're looking to, trying to clear something up. So, I mean, I would not say we're unique. Walpole's definitely not unique in that situation, but trying to, that's part of the reason of doing like a zoning audit and doing a rewrite, is really trying to, you know, years go by, decades go by, new zoning goes in, zoning comes out, you know, new member may write something one way, and then years go by and it's written differently. So, you want to try to have almost like a refresh when you do a zoning rewrite, is trying to have that language cleaned up and brought to the standard, so.
So the copy we have in front of us is just the changes, is that correct?
Yep.
On Article 8?
So for Section 8, this is what is, how, this is how it's printed in the print and the warrant. So it is the section that shows what is ever being, what's being removed as strike-through, and what is being added as underlined. There is a, I think I mentioned it in the memo, but maybe I'm just overthinking it, but I know sometimes it can be, these can be difficult bylaws, changes to read. So there is a cleaned up version that I have on the steering committee's webpage. I was going to make note of that for town meeting members in my memo, in their packet.
So the portion that was sort of nonconforming, that is number 10?
Yep.
The last one?
Yep, 8.10.
Just as a point of interest for everyone else here, I haven't been here all that long myself, but I've never seen anything regarding nonconforming off-street come to me. I had to ask Jack if he recalled anything, and he didn't really know anything either. So it's something that's in there, I think, in, in case of something needed.
Yeah, right.
It isn't something that's been coming up before us.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Those would be unique cases, basically.
Yeah, it's something that's already there, that they want to be able to keep there, in case they change something, but.
Again, unfortunately, it comes down to verbiage. It's how people perceive verbiage, right? So to me, it's, you know, I, I don't know, Patrick, I, I could read this and say, I agree, I disagree. To me, it's, you know, I would love to see how a lawyer would refute.
Yeah, no, that's.
Right, you know what I'm saying? So it really, because again, this becomes more of a litigious situation than what the planning board feels, you know, I'm saying, listen. I want to be fair to everybody, and if you're able to build in a certain area, go ahead and build. But again, you know, past verbiage has allowed people to circumvent, do what they want to, and it's like, that doesn't feel good, that's.
Yeah.
But, but you can't do anything because your hands are cuffed, because the verbiage says they can't. So as long as, as long as that mindset is there, and we're changing the, the bylaws to be more clear, to, to align with what the future plans are for Walpole, then I mean, how can anybody in the town of Walpole be unhappy with that?
Yeah, no, and I think not to belabor the point, but I think, nothing's perfect, and I think we try to take, you know, both looking at the work, the town council went into it, and then having the back and forth with, with her, having the back and forth with the steering committee. This is one of those things where people can maybe look at something a different way, and so there are definitely situations through our meetings where we may, one member may be looking something, looking at a portion of zoning one way, the other person's looking at it a different way, and, I mean, Jim could tell you definitely, as, you know, zoning enforcement, it's a ultimately comes up to him, but um.
Jimmy once, Jimmy once had a full head of hair, that's the problem.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what you want, really.
But, but overall, Paul, that is the intent, is trying to, trying to remove loopholes, and trying to be clean up and precise. Moving on to Section 9.
One comment, we have a letter from the Board of Health, dated 9/17/25. Board of Health at its September 16th, 2025 meeting voted unanimously that the board does not have any comments on the fall town meeting articles. It's in the record now.
All right.
Before Mr. Shaney comes on, do you want to do, vote this out? I don't think you want to vote them all at once, you want to do favorable action on each one, in case?
Yeah.
That way it's.
Vote's call, worst preference.
Well, it's easier if one doesn't go, you don't lose them all.
I'll make a motion that we, for favorable action on the article relating to Section 8 rewrite of the zoning bylaws.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three hundred and thirty zero for Article, for Section 8 rewrite.
Right. So, moving to Section 9, the current wording of Section 9 is nonconforming situations. Why I want to emphasize that is because when we look, the review that went into Section 9 is probably the most that is steeped in having this more accurately reflect state law. So, the changing the wording itself to lawfully nonconforming uses and structures is kind of a reference to its master and a lodge after 48, Section 6. We want to be able to make sure that we're compliant with how the law is being reviewed, interpreted now in the courts, and that was something that is kind of the overarching theme for, especially for this section. You'll notice there's a few situations where we'll you know, move, there's a recommendation, obviously, not only just making corrections to Section 9, but moving a portion to Section 3 for enforcement. So it's another situation where we reviewed it, we're trying to clean it up, and then we notice there's a, almost like a reorganization aspect, where it's like, all right, well, if we're cleaning up this, we need to also make sure we move a portion of it to, to Section 3.1E. Overall, I mean, this one is you know, it certainly looks like a lot of crossed out stuff, but it's, it ends up coming together, and I think we try to, again, that goes back to the theme of trying to be more precise with our wording, and be more consistent with state law. And I'll just say also reference to, so there's a change in here for removing the definitions within Section 14 for nonconforming situations, noncompliant situations, noncompliant structures 10 years and, or older. The quick reasoning for that is that that language is not consistent with state law. It's not, it's, it's, it isn't recognized as such. So that's why town council recommended removing that, and just having uses and structures, because that's clearly defined language within nonconformities. Have to answer any more questions? Yeah.
Town council have any issues with the correction to Section 3 being within this article?
Section 3?
Yeah, the portion we're putting into enforcement.
No, I, so that's.
We've already rewritten 3. Did she see any issues with that?
No, I, unfortunately, when we're, when you go about doing this, and I think, you know, we're trying to do this in phases to try not to overwhelm town meeting.
There's always going to be overlap, right.
Yeah, and then that's a situation where we, we rewrote 3. So nothing that's currently within 3 is being changed, but there's both a section within, there's a subsection within Section 9, and then there's a subsection within Section 6, that should be more properly put in enforcement. And so those are why those changes are part of the article, is that they're really just being moved to Section 3. There's no change within the actual language of 3 currently, it's just I think, again, goes back to that, probably, probably should be placed in enforcement rather than nonconforming.
The town council felt it didn't have to stand on its own or anything like that, or as a separate article, just moving something from here to there, or?
Yeah, she, she didn't have a problem with that, and I think mostly with the fact that we're not really, not really changing substance as much, we're really just reorganizing.
Organizing.
And you know, like, there's a, I think it's in, one second. I want to say, so Section, not to jump ahead, but in the article for Section 6, when we make a change with the location of buffers, and the location of more than one principal building on a lot, we also have to make sure we correct a reference to it in Section 13. So that's a good example, like, that's added to that article, but it's really just making sure we're not having inaccurate references within the zoning as we change it.
So basically, on Section 1, we're eliminating the existing ones and replacing it with the five-line paragraph.
Correct.
Okay. Where did that go? Uh, John, do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Ah, there it is over there, okay. Paul, do you have any questions?
No, it's nice to see a lot of cross-outs.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna lie, I'm like, wow, man, you like, you guys whacked the hell out of this thing, but yeah, I mean, that's, obviously, it's good, and then, like I said, the underlining is the additions, but Patrick, I mean, again, nothing that alums mean to say.
It's tough with those articles, right? You can, you want to be transparent, you want to show what the changes are, but then people are like, oh, man, I got out of my range.
What are you going to debate out of this, you know, at the end of the day, I'm just, it's like, again, I always keep saying, as long as the language is more
Yep.
stringent, clear, where people can't circumvent it as much.
Yep.
Then, you know, we're moving in the right direction.
Okay. I thought I had a question, but I found where it got moved to. Okay, so that general provisions. Nonconforming uses, nonconformer structures. Non-conforming uses, non-conformer structures. Non-conforming lots, okay. That's being moved. That's appearing instructions. Okay, I don't see any other questions for myself. I'd like to make a note into the minutes that we have, no people from the town here as audience.
Right, we can join for all of them.
Okay. I'll make a motion then to accept the rewrite for section nine, a favorable action for the rewrite of section nine as article, whatever it may turn into be for the town warrant. Because you don't have it listed what article.
No, yeah, that's, uh, I think it's.
Um.
Open around.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. B, zero, zero. And that just brings us back to article six, well, section six.
So section six is our dimensional regulations. Within this section, it, obviously, we, same theme of trying to have the language be concise or to be better explained, I think we noticed in this one, there is both trying to reorganize certain things that are out of place and then trying to remove stuff that is kind of obsolete. In particular, you know, the table itself. Not a lot of major changes, but I will note that obviously, the height within the central business district, this is more of a substantive where the board agreed and trying this obviously also to be consistent with how we, how we list height in our other business districts. We, uh, we go from 52 to 50, but we also add the language of not more than four stories. That's something that's consistent with actually how we have it written on our MBTA overlay district and having that consistent, but also how we have it in our other business districts, both business and highway business lists the height, and then they also have a story requirement. So part of the reason of that is much more of a, kind of a substantive change. There's also a few different changes to the footnotes dealing with some stuff that's just not really used. Footnote two, we notice in, in the back with the explanation is it, it's no longer, it's not listed anywhere, so we just kept that as reserved for future use. Footnote seven, we just kind of corrected some of the language. Footnote eight, dealing with, you know, in the rear yard, a butts a resident district, and this is for, one second, this is for limited manufacturing in industrial districts. We had it consistent with, with a buffer requirement, it's listed as 50 right now, but the buffer when a commercial district like that has a budding residential is 40. So the language going to 40 is because it's consistent with how it is in the buffer district. Oh, no, the buffer district, I'm sorry, within the buffer bylaw. Another kind of substantive change, so in footnote 11, I noticed that was also something that's not really utilized. So what we did there was essentially at a provision where in the highway business district for frontage, for frontage, right now, how is this currently allocated out, it's a 50-foot front setback. We have, and that includes parking, so not just the building, but parking itself. So the thought behind this change in the footnote of that, of making a new footnote 11 was to allow for parking to be, so you have 25 feet, no parking in the front setback for the highway business district, but you can have parking after the first 25 feet. The footprint of the building itself is still 50 feet, so we're not changing that setback. To kind of explain that is, you know, highway business district, obviously, it's, um, it's an important, important commercial zoning district in the town, and it's limited in space, you know, it's, it's fairly wet out there. And so we don't want to limit space, but we also don't want to overly infringe on the Route One. So I know in some other towns, you know, we have to see car parking that's right on Route One. We definitely want to have more of a separation, which is, I think, trying to find the middle ground with this, with this footnote is, hey, no, no parking within the 25, but we're going to allow you to be parked after the first 25, which will alleviate some concerns or some, some of the constraint that's impacting highway business properties currently. And. So some of the big changes, so 6C is changed from special conditions to supplemental regulations. And see, these are more of the kind of, you know, you have your dimensional regulations and these are the further explained when something is, well, if you have this, you get this. Or if you, you know, if you're non-compliant in this situation, here's where, you know, you get relief. So many, one of the big changes there is really just, it's another reorganization thing. We moved buffers, which are currently in section 5G, section five being a use regulation, being a use regulations, we're moving that to section six as a new section six D, but we're moving the current section 6C4 to section five. 6C4 deals with number of buildings on a lot. That's much more of a, a use regulation than a true dimensional regulation. So they're essentially swapping places. It also helps being able to do that because now you don't have to reorganize all the subsections after 5G by moving them up one. So that's helpful then. There's another change within projections. So right now, you're allowed to essentially encroach no more than 18 inches within the setback, and it's a projection of something like a roof, an e chimney, a cornice. And obviously, if it's a means of egress, you're like steps or landing, you're, you're allowed to be up to 48 inches within the setback. But we noticed there was a provision that did not protect covered unenclosed porches, so something like a farmer's porch. We added relief within that section that if a, a covered unenclosed porch, which is part of a required egress, like your front door, it shall not encroach no more than 48 inches in the front yard setback. This has come up just from, you know, right now, currently, an uncovered deck is allowed to encroach no more than 48. So if that's an uncovered, you know, backyard deck, encroaching no more than 48, and should there be some relief for something like a porch? We noticed two people coming to the town and looking for relief from that, and it's usually a hard, it's a hard sell to get a variance to relief because it's on a, on a farmer's porch, because that's not something that's, um, it's hard to find a hardship for wanting a farmer's porch. But at the same time, if it's a required egress, having that, that relief there is, you know, the thought behind it is trying to have, if you have a relief for the deck, have a relief for, uh, for a porch. Yeah, I won't go into, if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer those. It's a, there's a lot of also cleanup changes as well.
Question?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yep.
Who, just for the record, who made the recommendation for the additions and deletions?
additions and like, like within the?
Yeah, so anything that's crossed off?
Yep.
And anything that's underlined, underline is additions, right? You know, and then the cross is the, is the strikeout, so we'll call it, is the, is the deletion. Was it a collective committee?
So.
That said that, or was it, do you know what I'm saying, like, just for the public record?
For the public record, what, how the process went initially is, we have, we have town council as our, our legal consultant. They conducted a rough audit, and then they took a more comprehensive zoning diagnostic where we have, 25-page document of recommended changes here and there. As we've looked at section by section, we work within town council providing, hey, here, can you provide us a draft mock-up of the amendment referencing some of the, referencing the corrections that town council flagged? The steering committee looks at that and determines whether or not they agree with those changes, whether or not those changes should be expanded. And so it's really, it, it starts with a, you know, town council, you know, creating that draft bylaw, and then it's further reviewed with a kind of that, that, that local review of the steering committee to make sure that they agree with those changes. And then I, and obviously, including anything else that they feel is missing or should be added. So it's, I would say the steering committee is the group that would take ownership of it. Or so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can just pass down the audit summary to him. Paul, if you want to see, that's the audit summary.
If you're interested, I got the zoning diagnostic too.
What's that?
If you're interested, I got the zoning diagnostic report too, if you'd like to take a look at it. I can email it to you if you're interested.
Sure.
Yeah.
John, you wait for somebody?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, um, I was, I was checking if I had any questions. Do you have any other questions?
No questions.
Paul?
No, I mean, I would, I would trust that you guys have been sitting on this steering committee and feel that everything has been discussed and so forth.
Yeah.
Like, again, you know, here's the thing, this is that fine line of being on a planning board and doing the bylaw and what I personally feel. You know, I mean, all of this growth, building, apartment buildings, 200 units, 100 units, whatever the case may be, have all seemed to come from these zoning bylaws that people have gotten around to say, hey, we, we can build. By the time it comes to here, John, help me out, i- it's, it's almost like they are allowed to do that. So now it's just more of like, you know, are the plans right? You know, are they building it to code, you know, and are they, are they doing it the right way?
Part of that is the mixed-use regulation.
Right, so, so I guess, John, what I would ask is, are we dealing yet with the mixed-use regulation yet? Or are these just kind of like, I mean, again, to me, packing's never been a problem, so it's like, why, why are we addressing it other than maybe some cleaning up?
Well, the mixed-use is going to fit mostly under section five, because that's where the use is allowed.
Yeah.
Uh, the conventional regulations regarding that are in the section six.
And this project in general is, it's basically all about cleanup. So to the extent that you would want to make any changes to the substance of bylaws, it's not here.
The article does need to be looked at and.
But you understand what I'm saying, correct, right, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's being expanded upon far beyond what they expected.
Right, because again, I mean, the, I mean, this is Mrs. Murray here. Ms. Murray, while I did not find the Wompo zoning bylaw to be seriously deficient with respect to any of the, these elements, the audit level did reveal that the need for updating to ensure consistency with current law as well, but it maybe doesn't talk about the ambiguity, I mean, the things that people are finding with our bylaws or our zoning bylaws to come around us to then present these cases, you know what I'm saying? And that's what, that's where I'm kind of going. Again, I reflect on my two years here to say, it always seems like these people find these ways to create these spaces where they're, they're by law, right? And if you look to Jimmy, you say, Jimmy, are they allowed to do, yeah, they're allowed to do it, you know, I'm sorry.
So I think John kind of hit it pretty well. So obviously, dimensional regulation, we're looking at things like, all right, what is the percentage of impervious? What's the percentage of open space? What's, you know, setbacks, what's the height? The use regulation, and if we want to just be specific in talking about mixed use, because I think, I think we talked about this last time too, that provision is, it's, you kind of look at it like this. It's within the use table, it's allowed within CBD and B. And then we further just prescribe CBD as the whole three and a half times the gross floor area of, of the commercial space, and then within the business district, I think it's two times the gross floor area of the commercial space. That in terms of ambiguity is, um, kind of, to give you a better example, towns may regulate density in a much more consistent way. The way we regulate density for like those types of uses, which seems to be the big, big thing, the big outcry, it's unique, I've never really, I've never seen it other than here. Most things are usually, are usually dwelling units per calculate, to a dwelling, sorry, square, sorry. It is, it's mostly basically, you're, you're, the number of dwelling units is based upon square footage as opposed to the square footage of your residential is based upon your commercial space. So dwelling units per acre is the way we calculate it right now within the MBTA because that's, that's a new element of zoning, but that's also consistent how most towns would calculate density. Or they have what's called like a floor area ratio model. So the model that we use currently, it's, it allows, the best way to describe it is if you're a developer and you're looking at a site and you're able to check off the boxes of like their dimensional regulations and you're able to figure out the parking, how many units you put up there is just based upon whether or not you meet the dimensional regulations. So some towns would have more of a control on, hey, you meet the dimensional regulations, but we also want to have further regulation on the density. And so when you see larger buildings and they're, you know, how do they calculate that amount of units? It's mostly because they were able to make it fit within a certain area as opposed to being capped almost at a certain amount of units.
So can I give you a scenario, Patrick? In the past, I believe that this town, not under my, anything that I've set on, has allowed five-story buildings. So where in the bylaws to say that that is the case? Because again, if you, if you look at the town next door.
Yeah.
South Norwood, I think there are only three-story buildings.
So partly it's the height, so that would be like dimensional regulations. So right now, I mean, since I've been here, the downtown was at 52 feet. It wasn't really dictated by stories, it was dictated by the height. And the way the heights calculated, and Jim can explain it to you, it's not just, hey, it's a clear cut 52, it's, it's, I'd better explain this to me, it's basically, it's calculated by looking at it from multiple angles and coming up with a mean average.
Yeah, so it depends on the style, the design you're building. This is mentioned on chapter six, we were writing, bringing it down to say 50 feet and cabinet at four stories, so you can't go above five. So you're getting either a taller story inside of 13-foot high ceilings rather than a five-story building, put more in there. So again, it goes on the shape of the roof, so if you have an A roof, we're going to the center of it. Your flat roof, you're going to the top of the flat roof. So roofs, your roof lining, your mean grade around, so if your building drops off, you get an average grade. So you probably know the one on Spring and West, between one side of that property to the other side is almost 13 feet difference. So they kind of start their ground level in the midpoint.
So let me ask you something, Jimmy. So if people come here before us, are we talking in stories, are we talking in feet?
Both, because I could do, I could do a single-story house, a ranch with 15-foot high ceilings.
Right.
Or I could do a two-story house in the same. Or I could do a two-story house in the same, because you often...
Okay, sure.
You have a nice continual ceiling, or people have small. So, we're kind of capping it at, rather than just the height, because then they could tweak it down to, okay, I can get seven stories in that height. The new one that we've put in is, it's 50-foot high, but four stories. So now you're limiting, rather than being 50 stories at five.
Right, but, but again, without, I understand you're allowing kind of both in the language, but it sounds more like there is a distance level, like they can't reach a certain distance, right? Because again, like you said, I could do a one-story, 15-foot, or a two-story, 15-foot, same thing.
Yeah.
It's just how high I want my ceiling to be.
And honestly, a developer, looking from the financial side, if he goes off four stories, but can get the 50-foot high.
Yep.
He's not really going to put in 13, 14-foot-high ceilings, because the material cost, the heating cost, all that's going to add to it, so he's more likely to keep it down at the average level. So if you give him a four stories, because four stories at 40 feet could be, say, 15 units. Four stories at 50 feet is still 15 units.
Sure.
It's a lot more money he's going to spend, so it kind of is enticement for developers too, that they're going to look more at the stories than actually the height, because going, that's why, to a degree, around, especially around here, to your point, the towns around us are lower. There's two, the main criteria on that is, nobody wants to hit 70-foot mark, because that, you go into a high-rise, and the change in code, fire safety, adds hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars to a building, so no one will ever, unless you're honestly Boston, you're not going to go above that level.
Right.
But even though, what the height regulations we have, all the surrounding towns, we're the smallest.
We are.
We're, our max is 52 on high with business.
55.
55, sorry. Sharon's like close to, is 80, I think Norwood's...
So that's what I'm saying, so it doesn't really matter, if I say three-story in South Norwood, and we say five-story, it doesn't matter, because again, three-story could be 15-foot, three-story versus a five-story nine, or whatever, okay.
To better explain that, just, we're looking, so right now, we, because, trying to figure out what we can get by with, in terms of capacity for town meeting, right? How many articles we want to bring in. Section 5 is going to be dense, there's a lot of different subsections within that, and then the use regulations themselves, not just cleanup, but we will take a kind of review of, especially like the CBD in general, that's a unique way, I told you, in terms of like how it's calculated. It probably could be better explained, and it probably could have a much more of a, removing the loophole, be much more controlled and consistent with how other communities calculate density. So like, I don't remember the height within Norwood, and South, and South Norwood, but I know they, if they have a height of, say, 40 feet, they probably also have a density calculation. So they'll have like, you need 10,000 square feet and 2,500 per each additional dwelling unit. That's a way of saying, alright, you can build something this high, you can, you know, have this much impervious, but your, how many units you can fit in there also is factored in. And right now, we don't, we don't factor in units, the way, like in the downtown, how it's calculated, we factor in space, and space provides that, almost, that ambiguity and that flexibility for a developer to make something.
That's where I wanted to go, because, like you say, you know, I mean, I totally get it now, this is making sense, right? You know, against total feet necessarily, three, you know, three-story, 15-foot ceilings versus five at nine. Alright. Now, five stories at nine allows more units, more space, or, not more space, because again, it's still the same, but more units, or it's more potential people.
Yeah.
More density. So, to me, are we considering the amount of population that continues to come in here? Because again, if we're, say, hey, we cap it out at this, and now it's the builder's discretion to say, I can do three with higher ceilings, or five with shorter ceilings. Five with shorter ceilings just means that there's more influx of people.
Well, the five, I was just using that as an example, just for the size, and that's why...
I hope I'm, I hope I'm saying this right, so if I...
Yeah, no.
I hope so, yeah.
You're saying you can cap it at four stories, so the height might be still up there, but they can't go five stories, they can only go to four. So if we left it at the height on its own, you could go five, six-story building. But without saying you can only go four stories, even with the same height.
So, us saying four...
Smaller building.
Right, so Jimmy, us saying four stories still somewhat controls the population of how many people can fit in a building. Right? Because again, you know, eventually, over time, when all of these builders find these places to put these buildings, again, we have a population issue, right, in this town. And again, it's wonderful to have an influx of people, I'm not against that, but there's a point where to say, hey, you know, because, again, because the, most people have come to this town for the quietness, the, and so forth. Now, all of a sudden, now we're going to be a small little, small little, small city, call it, you know, because now there's going to be so many people, right? Yeah.
You know, I'd say it's a multitude of factors.
I don't want to overcomplicate this.
No, 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 but I mean, I think it's the five of us, we're just, you know, in terms of, you know, the growth we're seeing, I mean, part of that's demand, part of that is the fact that, you know, there's land available, the zoning itself, you said, provides some of that wiggle room, and, you know, it's, it's to no one's fault or anything like that, but it's part of...
This is all fault.
No, but it's part of why you want to make sure you review these sections of zoning before, because it feels like right now, obviously, some of the developments have happened, and we're going, we're going through this process of changing, but we can't change what's already been built, in the sense of, you know, kind of behind the eight ball here, when it comes to that, but we're trying to...
I think, Patrick, my question to you is, how can we put language in these bylaws to slow it down? Because I think, I think 100%, I would say 90% of the population here in the town of Wampole would want to see it slowed down.
Capping the story and capping the, putting a density calculation. So right now, like I said, if you're capping, I'm thinking of it dwelling units per acre, so that's just an easier, easy metrics to figure out, how, it got a lot, how big is it? Here's the maximum number of units in there. That's a much more clean way of saying like, hey, you may be able to build a building this big, but you can't stuff as many units as there as you want, you have to have it match the size of your lot. And so that places the, more of a regulation on density right now, you know what I mean? I think that's, that's kind of where I keep going back to, it's just that right now, it's, you know, it's a way of fact, of calculating density, right? We have the three-and-a-half times the commercial space for mixed use, but it's, it's more of an open-ended number.
Yeah, it's, the number, I don't know where it came from, but it isn't really tied to something, that's a good reason, probably.
Yeah.
Just thinking to mixed use, I'm just trying to think back, history-wise, I'm thinking, the original purpose of mixed use, someone opens a storefront, they live above it.
No.
Uh, they're not looking for have much downtown, whatever, typically you have, your storefront, you have one story above it, in most cases. All they're looking for was a chance to live next to a store. That's my thought. And yet, now, it's gotten blown out of condition. No one wants the mom and pop with, living above it. Everyone's looking for, okay, this is as commercial, we're going to now rent out all these empty spaces now. No one's going to be associated. And the other thing is, until, if we're going to have commercial space, why, we should just find a way to require them to have clients, really, at least make an effort to have clients. Because otherwise, all we're doing is creating...
That's another story, right? You know what I'm saying?
That's another story.
I mean, these people that have been allowed to say commercial space on the bottom, and so forth.
We know business, because all the downs, the first floors are empty.
Well, I think that that's where...
That's something...
Stronger language has to go in for the future, because like you say, Patrick, we can't, we can't reprimand...
We can't change it now.
We can't reprimand what has already been allowed, so, you know. So to me, it's like, let's learn from what has happened, how do we feel about it? And then fairly make the...
Because I think if Patrick finds that's how they're changing what he's doing right now, Patrick, the board admitted four stories in town, because if it was the original height of no-story cap, in the center of town, I could literally do commercial first floor, commercial second floor, and then go three-and-a-half times, that's three more stories residential, now I'm at five stories, and my height is still allowed. But right now, if you go commercial first floor or commercial second floor, you only get two more stories, no matter the height.
Structured parking, right?
Yeah.
So you have structured parking, most have structured parking underneath, you're really looking at three stories of residential, as opposed to...
I said, I said...
Yeah. Just the numbers as well.
But again, I think, Jimmy, you know, the, again, if you hear the people of Wampole, and right, you know, again, we're a volunteer board here, I mean, we're not the select board, but it's just more like, you just hear these people, and they're distraught about like, oh my god, is that, that's a apartment, oh, that's going to be a, I mean, the amount of units, again, growth is good.
Yep.
But I think there's got to be a point where we have to say, listen, we do have it somewhat under control in the sense where it's not so favorable for just anybody to come in, a builder to come in and say, these bylaws are not as favorable, and I could circumvent them and then do what I want. And I'm not saying it's that, even that easy, but you know what I mean?
I mean, it's, it's all good points, like you said, I mean, some of it, some of it's just, you know, you can't, you can't stop development, but at the same time, you can, you can better plan, and you can better try to dictate how your town is laid out, and try to, you know, review and change certain things that maybe, like you said, there's, if there's a loophole, or if something's kind of not clear, that's a good opportunity of trying to shore that up, so that you do have a better control over what, or how development is built. Not that development is going to come, but how it's going to look.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's another thing, a lot of people have mentioned, how can we control what these buildings are going to look like?
But we do still have...
Coming in there just metal and glass. It's not, that's not what Wampole was, it was brick storefronts in most cases.
But we do have language in our bylaws, though, to say that it has to have some type of look and feel of...
It's not supposed to be out of...
I thought, I thought, I almost, I don't know what paragraph it says in it.
It is in Section 13, and I think it's, it's a kind of hard thing, where some towns will have what's called, like it's a, like, almost like design guidelines, but that's kind of how they function, is their guidelines. And they may exist as its own standalone document, not something within the zoning.
How do we feel on that?
I think it's, I think it's a good idea, I think it makes sense for a town to put something like that together.
Have you guys attacked, and again, I'm sorry, a thousand questions, have you, have, we, is the steering committee addressed that?
That could be almost its own process. I wouldn't say that, it's not, that, a design guideline booklet would be its own kind of initiative, it'd be kind of separate from what the zoning area is.
But again, are you going through every section of the bylaws and reviewing them, crossing, adding, or whatever? So that, that'll be a section that will be reviewed, correct?
No, I think, what I'm saying is, design guidelines, it's almost its own, its own document. It's not attached to the zoning.
But is it, is it, Patrick, and again, is it, is it in the bylaws today, though? I think there's a small section about it that says that...
So, in...
Because I remember, I remember the...
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's, so Section 13, I believe...
I mean, includes language, like the kinds of citing that you could use.
Well, no, I mean, we're not, you know, the town of, the whole town of Wampole is in a condo complex where we say, you know, the exterior facing has to be the same, but I'm just saying that, I thought it has to have some type of look and feel of...
Yeah.
What other buildings look like. Again, you can't, I can't be super modern, my building, and everybody else's looks, right? I believe that that's kind of what it states.
Yeah, I mean, you do have language, and it's Section 13.12. So that's Design Standards and Guidelines for the Central Business District. You have it within your zoning, and I think that's, you know, you can look at it in two ways. I just, for me, I've seen it more as standalone document, when towns do like a review of their downtown. I just, I know Norwood does, they have it as a standalone document. How well it gets followed is kind of dictated by...
Maybe we need to expand them.
Providing that to, yeah.
So can we make a recommendation that that is taken under consideration?
Yeah, I mean, that's something...
We haven't done 13, obviously.
Oh, yeah, that's what, these are my questions. So like, again, I, rather than to accuse that it isn't being seen, it's just more like, have you, I would assume that the steering committee is going to look at every section. If that's the case, it sounds like maybe you haven't discussed this yet.
Or maybe we...
Section 13, no.
This looks like it says Central Businesses, maybe we need to expand that to other districts as well.
Yeah, well, whatever, I mean, you know, again, I, listen...
CBD is usually where, like you said, that is something you drive in, that's something that affects everybody.
You're intelligent people, you know, again, those that have gone before, you know, on this committee are very good members, so I mean, you know, and everybody has the, I believe, the best interest of Wampole.
Yeah.
So it's just more like, can we, when we get to that section, can we really make sure that the language is strong enough to say, you just can't come in and build anything you want to, it's got to have that look and feel of what Wampole...
Yeah, I think it's, I think the word I'm thinking of is enforcing it, right? I mean, that's, you have it in there, it's a guideline, how, how can we better make sure that a developer comes in and they adhere to it? Not so much like, okay, great, and then not follow it. I think we want to make sure, we want to have it have teeth, right? We want it to be...
Yeah, exactly, right. Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
John, I'm good with the questions, thank you, Patrick, for the...
Yeah, of course.
I'm sorry, the...
I believe...
Why not, right?
We just have an issue at the moment. I'll make a motion for favorable action, rewrite regarding Section 6 Dimensional Regulations. I have a second.
I'll second.
Fall in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain.
Is it 300?
201.
Oh, 20, oh, you abstain.
I'm going to abstain.
You are going to abstain?
From 6?
Uh, is that going to create an issue with...
No, I mean, it's a three-member board.
It's a three-member board, you, yeah, we get two...
Uh, I'll make a 300 then.
300?
Thank god we have pencils.
Okay. While you're here, do you have any other comments you wish to make?
No, I would say, you know, we're, if they mailed all you, we're trying to, you know, think about the next round for the spring. Section 5 is one, whether to determine whether we bring for the spring, or if that's safe to the end, but we do have a few more sections that, that need, that need to get done in this process. And make sure we bring it forward in a way that's not overwhelming, but consistent with how we're writing it right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and we have a, we have an at-large member seat open, so if anyone has a background in zoning or law, or... More than welcome to, to reach out.
I just play a lawyer on TV.
Okay. With all issues being addressed, then, let's move on to the rest. Okay, that's the, that's the, that's the, that's the... I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I think Phil has to make a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
We're good.